Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance, in person or virtually, this evening, and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
The flag.
...of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call roll. Tanya Bowers? Present. Joseph Campos? Paul Mendez?
Present.
Ann Jordan?
Present.
Abel Campos?
Present.
Isaac Myron?
Present.
Pam Reinceiere?
Present.
Jerry Cochran?
Present.
Madam Chair, there are seven members present and we do have a quorum. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic development, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on the Charter Cable PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded, so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table and online, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask that you silence your cellphones to prevent interruptions during the meeting, and also silence yourselves when you're not talking. Mute yourselves, rather. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the Commission, please come to the podium. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Uh, since no one is going to be here physically, we are going to do what, John Funfar?
I would suggest, Madam Chair, that you have a list of the individuals and Mr. White can provide that to you who are online. Maybe if you could just call that person to the, for that item, and hopefully staff knows who's speaking for what. There is a, for those in attendance online, there is the Raise Your Hand feature. So on that list, on that Mr. White has, he can see the little hands raised when it's that time, so, but hopefully we'll be able to recognize everybody one at a time, and I know, for example, Mr. Strom said has a number of people from his location and he has provided a list, so I would just suggest maybe just calling people by name, so.
Terrific.
Okay.
That's a good plan. We will play it by ear. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. Okay, so, Mr. White, is anyone raising their hand, saying that? No. Perfect. All right, so we have no Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda. Like the records show, there were no declarations. Second, is anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? I do not see any indication from Mr. White that anyone in the audience has declared such. "We value your input. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the City Council will use to make its declaration. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity." Should we swear in those who are going to be speaking? I think so. I wish I had the script of what to tell me, people, of what people should say. I skipped over this last time. All right, so for all of you out there in virtual land, please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth in your testimony. You can say it right now. Terrific. I skipped over that one, yes, last time. All right, with that, the next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the March 21st, 2020, meeting. It has been sent out, the minutes have been mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Which commissioner is making a motion?
Madam Chair. Okay, go ahead, Isaac.
Oh, no, that's okay. Um, I move to approve the minute.
I second. This is Jerry Cochran.
Okay, Commissioner Myron has moved to approve the minutes as presented, and Commissioner Cochran has seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show that the minutes were unanimously approved. All right, moving on in our agenda. For the day, we now go to old business. I do not see any old business on the agenda, so we will be moving on to public hearings. It should be noted that what was listed on the agenda as Item A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the Kidwell property has been pulled, so we will not be entertaining that at today's meeting. We are moving on now to Item B, Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the urban growth area. And with that, I'm going to turn that over to Jacob Gonzalez, Senior Planner. Take it away.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, and thank you to everybody listening and participating online. Appreciate the, uh, the participation here. Um, this is a continued public hearing on the urban growth area, specifically tonight, we're going to cover the upcoming request to Franklin County for the expansion of the urban growth area for the City of Pasco, along with the draft environmental impact statement for the comprehensive plan. As part of the ongoing comprehensive planning update effort, staff has been developing an application on Franklin County to increase the UGA under the Washington State Growth Management Act. Counties are responsible for this task of expanding or reducing approving or not approving the urban growth area request. I think the slide with the population. Next slide, go. Obviously, um, this slide has been shown a few different times to the Planning Commission. The City of Pasco in this region has experienced tremendous growth. By the year 2038, we're expecting an additional, well, right now, actually, just under 48,000 residents since we're into the forecast horizon. Right, in 2018, there was an estimated population of about 73,590. That represents an increase of almost 65% between 2018 through the year 2038, which is what really jumped off the need to take a look at expanding the urban growth area. This is kind of a breakdown of the timeframe of what's occurred up to this point, and I think, but before moving forward with much more of the detail of the urban growth area in the EIS, I think it's important for us to kind of cover what's led up to this point here. Um, in June of 2018, the Pasco City Council adopted Resolution 3845. That was a recommendation of the proposed UGA at the time of about 4,800 acres. The UGA land use that was allocated as part of that, um, application effort called for approximately 76% of the land use to be designated for low-density residential, 0% for high-density, 2% for commercial, with the remainder considered for industrial and government parks, open space facilities. In August of 2018, Franklin County prepared a summary of requests and analysis on Pasco's preferred UGA that was on the 4,800-acre expansion. And that summary analysis identified that the request was larger than necessary by approximately 100 acres. However, it must be noted that in that report, um, there was notations regarding further refinement may be necessary, and also should be considered that the summary was prepared using the, uh, the population and land use trends that were submitted by the City of Pasco, so kind of a status quo development pattern. In addition to the summary provided by the county, numerous comments were received questioning the proposed expansion size, the allocated land uses, and the development patterns on the proposed UGA. There were numerous open house events in 2018, workshops and public hearings at the Planning Commission and at the City Council as well were available for folks. In the fall of 2018, the city decided to undertake a more in-depth approach for the determination of the urban growth area expansion, and that started with the determination of significance for a scoped environmental impact statement that would take a look at three, uh, urban growth area alternatives. The first alternative was a no action, meaning no expansion, that's requirement. The second was the already proposed 4,800-acre expansion, and the third, uh, alternative was going to be the development of a compact growth target, taking into consideration the comments and feedback from the public and local, regional, and state agencies. So, beginning in late 2018, the city began developing the land capacity analysis. This was an item that we covered, um, throughout the past six or seven months, but we did go through this, uh, at the March Planning Commission meeting. That analysis, which isn't a requirement, but was recommended by the county and by the Washington State Department of Commerce, provides an opportunity for the city to take a analytical look at capacity of residential, commercial, and industrial lands within the City of Pasco and the urban growth area. By doing this, we're able to take into, uh, we're able to better account for infill opportunities, redevelopment opportunities, uh, rather than focusing all of the growth specifically in the expanded UGA. The results of that analysis indicated that the city would only be able to accommodate roughly 30,000 of the forecasted 48,000 residents in the City of Pasco. Thus, additional lands would be necessary, uh, to a total of an estimated 3,573 acres to accommodate the full 20-year population projection. As part of the urban growth area application process, a capital facilities plan was prepared for the urban growth area, that is a requirement, along with an expanded infrastructure evaluation. This allows the city to understand what the costs are of expanding the UGA based on the services required to provide, uh, utilities, transportation, water, sewer, et cetera. The capital facilities plan for the expansion area itself identified that the cost for the six-year timeframe of approximately $114 million. And that's just for the expanded area for the reduced compact growth target. And, uh, that kind of gives us a little bit of a start on where we're at today, and we can move on to the next slide, and we can actually start going through the draft environmental impact statement. This was issued formally on Friday, May 15th, and so the D, uh, the draft environmental impact statement for the comprehensive plan is now available for folks to provide comment for, and we encourage that. So this table provides a summary of the urban growth area alternatives identified during the scoped EIS, so the three alternatives, when compared versus the goals of the Growth Management Act, those goals being the management of urban growth, the reduction of sprawl, transportation, housing, economic development, open space and recreation, environment, public facilities and services, and historic preservation. This table, uh, provides a really brief comment on, uh, you know, matrix style, the draft environmental impact statement itself is fairly lengthy and goes into much more detail, uh, but the results of this table basically summarize what each of the intended UGA boundaries, alternatives, and how they meet or do not meet the Growth Management Act, and it should be no surprise, I think, the results of, uh, that are shown here. Obviously, the alternative number one, no action, not only do we not meet any of the Growth Management Act goals, we also do not meet our forecast for population. Alternative number two, we do accommodate the forecasted growth, but we run into challenges where we meet, uh, less of the Growth Management Act, uh, requirements. Alternative number three provides, uh, a much better opportunity for us to meet the intent of the GMA accommodating not only the population growth, but also taking into consideration the employment needs, along with industrial needs necessary for an additional 48,000 or so residents for the City of Pasco. So, um, I don't know if we necessarily want to go one by one here because these are short, um, excerpts from that, uh, the draft EIS, but we'll take a quick look, obviously, on the urban growth, which is to encourage development in urban areas where adequate public facilities, uh, exist and can be provided in an efficient manner. Alternative number one, uh, does not allow us to do that. Uh, alternative number two focuses the majority of the growth in the expanded UGA. Alternative number three has a combination of both while increasing the densities. An interesting one to look at is that on the housing, uh, which it might be on the next page. On housing, you can see that, uh, alternative number two meets the housing demands, but with very limited housing, uh, options. And the reason for that was when alternative number two was delineated, the low density, as I mentioned, 76% of that was low-density development, so obviously you're limiting the majority of your residential growth for single-family detached units. Alternative number three, uh, took into account infill opportunities throughout the City of Pasco, redevelopment opportunities through vacant and under-legalized parcels, and also, uh, created new land uses, uh, in the urban growth area to provide not only enough residential land to meet the 20-year target, but also to do so with a variety of housing options, which as, I think, as you all know, as a portable housing is becoming more and more of a challenge here across the, the nation, and obviously here locally, that is a significant component of, uh, the purpose of, of the housing element itself. Similar with the transportation, the low-density development pattern, obviously will put an added stress on the local and state transportation system. The third alternative provides for more of an opportunity for multimodal activity to occur. The development pattern in alternative number three, as we've seen through the future, the draft future land use map, obviously has a much more generous mix of land uses throughout the UGA, and by doing so, it allows the development to occur in a way, in addition to, um, I'd say, development pattern that is much more proactive in encouraging, uh, active transportation mode to travel. Obviously, that helps us meet, and we'll go on to this in a, a topic later on in tonight's agenda, but that helps us meet the, uh, numerous goals, uh, through state, local, and national, uh, guidance on transportation, uh, for the City of Pasco. And so, this table represents, uh, obviously, a sampling of what to see in the draft environmental impact statement. Again, I don't, I don't think this should be much of a surprise, as we've been discussing this with the Planning Commission and the council for, for quite some time. It's, it's what, alternative number two was really, uh, created, the cause to develop. Alternative number three. Well, alternative number three has a significant price tag as well, as I mentioned, $114 million. That's a six-year timeframe of costs necessary to serve the expanded UGA, and that's required. It does provide a, a much more, uh, blended use of land uses that allows us to achieve, uh, council goals, comprehensive plan goals, along with taking into account the numerous comments and feedback we received from the public, uh, throughout 2018. I'd also like to reread an RCW from the Growth Management Act on the legislative findings on, basically, for the requirement of the Growth Management Act, because I think it's important for us and the audience to understand, uh, the importance of the long-range comprehensive planning efforts here at the City of Pasco, and it reads, "The legislator finds, the legislature finds that uncoordinated and unplanned growth, together with a lack of common goals expressing the public's interest in the conservation and the wise use of our lands, pose a threat to the environment, sustainable economic development, and the health, safety, and high quality of life enjoyed by the residents of this state." And I think the important thing to remember about that RCW itself is that while, um, obviously the, the comprehensive plan and the urban growth area, uh, as delineated on turn number three, is significantly reduced from about 4,800 acres to 3,500 or so acres, so we're missing about 1,300 acres, and we understand that there are some, uh, properties out there that probably would like to be included in that, however, the planning role here at the City of Pasco is to ensure that the City of Pasco's residents, uh, goals and, and measures are, are met here, and I'd like to reiterate that, I think it's important for us as we experience continued, uh, growth here in the region. So, uh, as a reminder, the city issued a draft environmental impact statement on May 15th. The public comment period ends on June 15th. Highly, the city's got, uh, the draft documents up on the city website. We've sent, um, uh, messages to over 100 individuals. There was an official press release, uh, conducted yesterday that went out to all media, news, community organizations, chambers of commerce around here. Um, I know there's also been available on the city's website, so the city's tried to make its best effort, um, regardless of the ongoing, uh, limited, um, communication requirements that are required right now. So upon receipt of comments, staff will address, uh, stress those and incorporate any necessary changes into a final EIS for the comprehensive plan that will not be issued until the comprehensive plan document itself is taken to the Pasco City Council in August and September. So on the next screen, there is a schedule. And, uh, the schedule is, uh, what staff proposes to move forward with. We did discuss this with Franklin County and the Washington State Department of Commerce representatives, uh, to ensure that we were making, uh, that we were meeting the, the necessary guidelines here. Um, so staff, um, upon comments received, um, up through the 15th, will, uh, and obviously tonight's meeting, uh, will make a formal recommendation of the Planning Commission for an adoption, uh, of the alternative number three resolution, and that will then go to the City Council the following week in June. That will allow us to submit a formal application of Franklin County for the urban growth area expansion. And, uh, that's, uh, that's all I have today, so, um, Planning Commission, um, and then members of the public, appreciate any comments or feedback. Again, try to answer anything as thoroughly as we can tonight, um, anything a little bit more in depth or analytical, be happy to respond, um, uh, in a, in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, although you did ask for public comment, what we're going to do first is go to the commissioners, and I ask my fellow commissioners, do you have questions or comments for, for, uh, staff? And I see that Commissioner Jordan does actually want to speak. Please go ahead.
All right, I did have a question. Some of the letters that we've received from community members make it sound like planning has been happening between the city and them. Is, is that something that has been happening, um, on our end, or on someone else's end in regards for the city?
I, I think I understand the question, and we, we've received the letters and the comments on the urban growth area application, and again, we just want to restate that the item in, in front, although it's titled comprehensive plan, the focus of the comprehensive plan item tonight is the actual boundary itself. Uh, obviously, the land use is a significant component of that. There will be an opportunity to comment on the land use itself at a public hearing in June, at June's Planning Commission meeting. Regardless, uh, with regards to the coordinated efforts between staff and the public, uh, we took into account the, the 29-plus comments received on the scoped EIS in the fall of 2018. There was, uh, there was significant comments received during the 2018 process itself, uh, not only by members of the Planning Commission and council, uh, but also throughout the numerous open houses that were held at the time during the development of alternative number two. So we also went back and took a look at those comments to make sure that what we came up with number three met the, um, I guess, met the overall summary of what we could incorporate from the comments, while still, while still meeting the requirements of the Growth Management Act. So, no, I, I don't believe that the staff here has acted solely without any outside comment. I believe the comments is what allowed us actually to develop the scoped EIS and the EIS process itself.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I'm looking at Mr. White. Commissioner Reinceire?
My hand was up in error. That was a leftover, so, um, just thanks to staff for the fabulous job they did on the draft EIS.
Thank you for that comment. So, just to be clear, there are a number of letters that were submitted that claim proper procedure was not followed, and I am specifically referring to a letter from Halverson Northwest Law Group, uh, Mark Ficus, excuse me if I'm mispronouncing that name, says that, uh, "Our clients did not receive notice of the change." Is this the wrong letter?
Yeah, and again, to reiterate, um,
Uh, yes.
Staff has sent notices to properties, um, as required by the Pasco Municipal Code, to all properties impacted by the urban growth area, so that's quite a few. I don't know the exact number, but there's 330 different notices sent out multiple times because we've had some council meetings over the past few months. And, and again, I, I think that we should remember that the whole intent of the compact growth target was to revise the urban growth area, and subsequently, the land uses associated with that. This is a, I think this is a second public hearing we've held on the urban growth area. Obviously, um, this, uh, the pandemic isn't what anyone expected to see during the development of any comprehensive planning effort, um, uh, which we hope to be as, uh, as, I think, fruitful for the community to participate in as possible, but obviously, this is nobody's intent. But the idea behind a compact growth target for the UGA was to significantly revise what What was proposed in twenty eighteen, it is very likely that what was proposed in twenty eighteen would not have been approved at the county. And I think it's important for us to note that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez, and uh it should be noted that we received several letters. Which the commissioners have perused. Um I'm also aware that we have a number of commenters who have reached out to us. Uh ahead of time, um not seeing any more commissioners who have questions for staff. Um we can now move on to the public hearing. And with that, I am going to open this up. Um I'm gonna start with a list that Kristen Webb handed. To us ahead of time, I'm aware that several other people have since popped up on our go to. Webinar, I'm gonna go through this list of people first, I'm just gonna read these first names. Caleb Stromstad, Dave Greeno, George Docstotter, Fred Olberding, Randy Mullen. Steve Baumann, alright, um and we have a much longer list of other people who are interested in commenting. It is not clear to us whether those of you uh have who've registered on this call wanna speak to this. Or the next item on the agenda, so we will go through the list that I just read first. And then we can entertain the rest of you, I would say this is a long list. We ask that you stick to three minutes in your comments. At the end of three minutes, Ms. Webb, are you gonna be timing that, she will signal to us. That your three minutes are up, we would greatly appreciate if you could wrap up your comments by then. Um with that, we're gonna start with Mr. Stromstad. And Mr. Stromstad, please begin by stating your name. Uh and your address for the record.
Good evening, can you hear me? Very good, Caleb Stromstead, two seven zero five St. Andrews Loop, Pasco, Washington. Um Jacob, you did a great job the presenting that, that was well said, um we do need to clarify a few things, you know. We have a number of people here tonight that wanna comment and there was significant changes made. Um to create alternative three and you know what? Unfortunately, the position that we're in right now, you know, is speaking up for the development community as a whole. The public comment period in twenty eighteen was sufficient for alternative two, alternative three. Um with significant changes to the urban growth boundary line and the land uses, there was not public comment received to create. Alternative number three, uh we have attempted to engage city staff, it's been over a year now on a specific commercial land use designation. And we've been told multiple times that we're proceeding with with studies and we're not going to make changes at this time. Uh your time for comment is at the public comment period, so unfortunately, um there's been a lot of work, a lot of heavy lifting that's been done. And the development community, the action arm to make this development happen has been left out of the loop. And 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 you'll hear from landowners, developers, engineering consultant myself. Um and. And and real estate agents, um and so I'm gonna let them speak on that. The schedule that was proposed is a schedule that stays the course and 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 does not include any revisions. Or review of public comment, it is a schedule that stays the course and and. And what we're asking the planning commission to do is to make a recommendation to city council, to have city staff seriously consider these comments. Because there you're gonna, you're gonna hear some very um good comments, we understand that there's. We want to work with the city of Pasco because we represent the development community that wants this development to happen, we want this update. To go through, but we want it done right, and the answer is, let's just get it done and then amend it a year from now is not acceptable. And so that, those are the comments that I'm kinda introing that you're gonna hear tonight. Um so we have one speci- we have two specific items we wanna address, the first one is Fred Olberding's property. There is a red or there is a thirty acre commercial island in a sea of residential. Um that's the letter that uh Mr. Ficus provided the planning commission. That commercial land use designation appeared out of nowhere without consultation from the landowner, without any plan that we know of. And the only thing that we can make sense of is it was done to artificially um. Manipulate the traffic uh study, because when you put commercial in a sea of re- residential and artificially.
You're at three minutes.
Is that my three minute mark? Okay, so.
Afraid so.
Okay. Do you want me to pass it off, who is next on the list and this is where?
Next on the list is Dave Greeno.
If we could, and and for the next one, Kristen, if you could please give like a thirty second notice so we can summarize the points. We don't get cut off in it it sentence, that would be helpful.
I will, I will make some sort of a motion indicating that, thank you so much, Mr. Stromstad and let's move on to Dave Greeno.
Hi, Dave Greeno, I reside at one two four zero six Eagle Reach Court in Pasco. I'm a developer, I'm with Big Sky Developers. We have developed over five hundred lots in the last five years in Franklin County and the city of Pasco. Um we have played big ball with the city, I brought city water down from. Road one hundred two miles to intersected dent in Culver, so I'm very aware of the growth and what we're trying to do. I have talked with multiple people involved in the um UGA expansion. There's probably twenty to thirty percent that don't wanna sell that are included in this, and I and I know that can change, I understand that. Um we have under contract Mrs. Coler's property. That is abutting this UGA, it's a hundred acres, um we're gonna be forced to do one acre lots. Um we have the opportunity to bring down city utilities right into the UGA. And create a hundred and fifty lots, um I'm trying to rush here to keep up with my time. Mr. Olberding's property, we do have under contract as well, eighty acres like Caleb said. Uh in a sea of residential, they're throwing in thirty acres of commercial, makes no sense, Randy, as you'll hear from tonight, Mr. Mullen. Wants the commercial acreage that is zoned residential on road sixty eight. Makes complete sense to me that that should be commercial and Fred should be released to uh residential. Have a lot more to say, a lot more issues, but that should hit my point. And run in, I'm excuse you, and we go back to Culvers and bringing the utilities, we are bringing. Want to bring, continue the city water that we spent a lot of money bringing down uh uh Culver um. Dent Road, Burns Road, and I wanna bring, continue bringing utilities, city water and sewer up dent to attach to the new boundary. Um we need to have Deborah Culvers added to that, the hundred acres that we're proposing to be added into the UGA. Like I said, we've got owners that aren't in that want to sell and owners that are in that don't wanna sell, it's kind of uh. I don't know, it's unfortunate, I am in the know, I'm talking to these people daily, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, maybe we can allot the extra twenty seconds to our next, our next speaker, Mr. Greeno, appreciated. Next, I would like to ask George Docstotter to speak. Name and address, please.
Six one one nine Burton Boulevard, owner of Desert Hills Realty and. I just wanna ask the planning commissioners to look at this thing. Instead of just looking at a map, drive out there and look at these properties. And go out sixty eight and look at the mess that's already created north of Burns Road. Sixty eight should be five lanes all the way out to Clark Road. And we're gonna have a mess in there that's already started. And you guys need to go out and look at this stuff before you approve it. Uh Fred's property got a BPA power line on it, you're gonna have to jog convention road. It can't even go straight, so you're gonna have a jogged intersection, but the other thing. You've got twenty percent of the ground is proposed for the UGA that's not gonna get developed. You've got both sides of road sixty eight, one owner, a legacy farm, he does not wanna do anything. Because he's saving it for his grandkids, so you need to look seriously, consider an alternative two. Over three, and the other thing about two over three, three is compact growth. Ramming everybody in and dinky lots, I've been selling real estate here for forty four years. The average buyer of a Pasco home wants a three car garage and a place to park his boat or RV. These little dinky sixty five hundred square foot lots, you can't even park two cars because there's no room. And if you go down, you wanna look at what sixty five hundred square foot lots are, go to Vancouver, Washington. When you can walk from milk to rough, and I think you need to really discount option three. And look at option two and please go out and look at these properties before you approve anything. There's, Mr. Gonzalez says, we're dictated by the state out of Olympia. Well, they live different over there than we do here and we appreciate our lifestyle. And I don't want some yahoo from Olympia or Portland or some college from Timbuktu. Telling me how I have to live and what I've gotta live in, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Docstotter, I think someone is not muted. Um next, we are going to go with Fred Olberding.
My name is Fred Olberding, I reside at nine eleven Birch Road in Pasco. Um well, I don't, I don't think I can get this done in three minutes because there's several things there uh. That that got me upset or has me upset, one of them is when we did the original UAG boundaries. The Port of Pasco was against it, one of my pieces of property because uh it interfered with their flight zone, so I worked with them. I actually signed over an easement, an air easement to that property and then. That piece of property was pulled out of the UAG, I never got a notification at that meeting. And the second thing that really bothers me is I was working with Mr. Greeno through Mr. Docstotter. Because I had sold a piece to the school district and it only made sense that next to a school district wouldn't be residential. And I come to find out, there's thirty acres of commercial in there. Well, you guys need to go out and drive down Burns Road off of road sixty eight, there's no pavement there. It, there's no trespassing sign, as Webb says, and they're not gonna go down Cow Trail, there's at least two. Signs that say deaf children, please drive slow. That's inaccessible, and as has been said before, give Mr. Mullen that and his investors that commercial zoning, I don't need it. People aren't gonna come out there, and the next thing I wanted to touch on is the traffic implications. And be, besides I eighty two, the next best one is Clark Road. And you can take Clark Road and you could also cross the railroad tracks because there's all. The development of the industrial area in Pasco and all that is going to have to have roads, highways, overpasses. Over railroad tracks and what and whatnot. The other reason I'm upset is because the section, or I'm excusing, the quarter section of ground I have. Uh that was removed from the boundary, original plan. You know, I I farm, that's what I do for a living, and my biggest concern is residential people. Be they come from the Clark Edition or or uh northern Burns or south of Burns Road. They seem to think since I live out in the country, I'm welcoming all their trash and I get dumped on every weekend with. Toilets, mattresses. Branch clippings, grass clippings. And it's hard to get it controlled because it's not, we're not in the city, okay, I'm done, I'm done bitchin', thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olberding, we're gonna move on now to Randy Mullen.
Hello, my name is Randy Mullen, seventeen ninety one Banning Road, Pasco, Washington. Our families uh lived here in the Pasco area since nineteen forty five, and so I'm I'm not a, I'm not a newbie to this area. We have some property right along road sixty eight that is prime. Uh commercial property, we have a ready willing enabled buyer that needs a lot of that property right now. Uh for a commercial use and it's zoned multi or non multi family, uh mixed family. Uh Fred has a bunch of property that he's trying to get rid of zoning or commercial zoning and we want that commercial zoning and we have. A uh someone who would be a uh quite an asset to the city of Pasco that wants quite a bit of that property in there right now. And uh the way it's zoned, uh according to this map, they would not be able to do that. I think it would be a big benefit to the city if this commercial user could locate there. Thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, let's now go to Steve Baumann.
Good evening, Steve Baumann here. Thank you, Commission, for the opportunity to uh visit with you this evening on this uh very important topic that we have before us. Um several things, notes that I have read.
Your address?
One of them in the in the packet this evening, in a in talking about what we're here to talk about. Um under the heading reduce urban sprawl, or I'm sorry, reduce sprawl. It says reduce inappropriate conversion of undeveloped land into sprawling low density development. Uh my first question would be, who decides if it's inappropriate? Um as a developer, I haven't been, I haven't been uh asked if it's inappropriate. Um I've asked a lot of the landowners that I that I know and they haven't been asked about that, so who's deciding if it's in a inappropriate? Um I trust us as the representatives um that represent us, you on the commission that uh. That you would be the one that that decides that, not city staff. Another question that I would have is the EIS that was presented tonight. Was that in fact at any point put before the public for comment, not the two thousand eighteen one? But the one from tonight, was there, was there any any way for the public to see that or have comment on it? Um I appreciate what uh Dave Greeno had to say about bringing five hundred lots into Pasco into the last five years. Um that's a pretty big uh, that's a pretty big influence on our city and uh. I appreciate what uh Mr. Olberding said, and he said, this is my town, that's kinda my words, what he said, but but this is where he lives. Um Caleb said the same thing, that's where he, this is where he grew up, Dave Greeno is invested in our community, he brought five hundred lots. Into development in the last five years here, uh for myself, I brought three hundred and fifty lots into development. In the last four years here in Pasco. Uh, for myself, I brought three hundred and fifty lots into development in the last four years here in Pasco. And uh, I believe that we have a significant stake in what is uh, in these decisions that we have before us. Mr. Docstatter saying that uh, he's been here um, practicing real estate for forty-four years. Mr. Docstatter needs to have a say in what we're talking about. Uh, Mr. Olberding had many valid points tonight. And uh, having a lot of ground that is impacted by this urban growth area. Um, his, his points need to be addressed. And uh, I thi- I think that it would be appropriate to, to uh, answer some of these questions. So that's the, that's what I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Baumann. Um, I didn't hear what your address is.
I didn't give my address. Thank you. I'm, I, I live here in Pasco.
Thank you very much. All right.
And Madam Chairwoman, I hate to interrupt. Um, the specific question Mr. Baumann asked was about the availability of the EIS in the public comment period. As Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, the draft EIS was released Friday, May fifteenth. There's a thirty-day comment period. Uh, we've notified approximately four hundred and I don't, I don't even know how many, four hundred and fifty owners. Franklin County has notified another fifty or sixty. It's on our webpage. Uh, if you don't, if you haven't received a notice, you will shortly. And uh, the comment period ends June fifteenth. So thirty-day comment period from Friday, May fifteenth. Comment period ends May fifteen, uh, June fifteenth. And I would urge all the speakers tonight that want to provide comments verbally here this evening. Also provide some version of written comments to be included in the record for the environmental impact statement.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. White.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I see your light is on.
Yeah, uh, I, I think just, uh, I did take some notes and obviously, uh, if uh, I know everybody who commented here, so we, we can reach out. But obviously, written comments will, will be appreciated so we can respond appropriately and be recorded in the public record of the final EIS. Um, the prior to its release and to be considered uh, for the rest of this process here. I, I would just like to reiterate um, a few things, um, because I, I heard a few things regarding Road sixty-eight, transportation capacities, et cetera. Um, as development occurs, um, there is an expectation that roads would be improved with the necessary uh, capacity. Or safety improvements necessary depending on the adjacent land use development. So um, while today, some of these roads may look bare or primitive in some cases. When development does occur, though, there will be, through the city's normal development review process, there will be improvements required prior to the development being approved. Uh, here uh, locally. Uh, the, some of the other comments regarding the uh, I, I, I think it's important to note that if it seems like there was a significant change, just because there was. Um, it, it is a necessary change, as I mentioned earlier, just for the capital facilities plan of the UGA itself. So not the rest of the city of what already exists, just the expanded boundary itself of thirty-five, thirty-five hundred or so acres. There is an estimated cost of a hundred and fourteen million dollars. That does not include maintenance, that does not include operations and what it takes to keep those facilities up and running throughout the duration of their lifespan. And I think it's important for us to understand that while we, we throw around the term growth, growth will pay for growth. Um, and there should be a caveat with an asterisk beside that uh, slogan, because not all growth pays for growth. If you're talking about industrial growth, then perhaps. But low-density development patterns, specifically when it's the majority of your land use will not pay for the entire lifespan to, it takes to maintain these facilities, thus putting the onus on the rest of the existing property owners and ratepayers of the city of Pasco. That is a requirement of the Growth Management Act. We do believe that alternative number three gives us a much better opportunity at meeting the intent of the Growth Management Act. I'd also urge the, uh, anyone interested to take a look at the two thousand eight comprehensive plan. And here shortly, the uh, well, actually, it's available on the website, the, the draft comprehensive plan goals and policies itself that are established by the Pas- the Pasco City Council. Obviously, they take into account public considerations. Uh, that's where we get a lot of our uh, input from. And we'd encourage folks to continue taking the surveys, because that's what allows us to develop these long-range plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, Mr. White, do we have anyone else who's raised their hand and would like to offer public comment?
We do. We have Allison Cable and um, Caleb Stromstedt, who is a previous speaker, Charles Laird. And Mark Figgus, along with, well, Randy Hayden's for a different subject. No, he's not. He's for the UGA, sorry.
I'm, I am going to go one at a time. The first name I got was Allison Cable. Name and address, please, Ms. Cable. All right, we are not. Ms. Cable? Your hand was raised? We cannot, we're having technical difficulties?
Uh, Ms. Cable, uh, does look like you are unmuted, but we're not able to hear you for some reason.
Okay, how about we come back to Ms. Cable? The next person on our list, once again, Mr. White?
Um, it was Mr. Laird. I, and his hand is raised. Yes, Mr. Laird, Charles Laird.
Charles Laird. Name and address, please, for public record.
Uh, Charles Laird, two seven one six, Route sixty-four. Um, uh, thanks for coming out tonight and uh, and hearing us all. But uh, I'm speaking on behalf of the Thanksgiving Limited Partnership, which I will refer to as TLP. Um, this is a partnership that's comprised of uh, Tippit family siblings who have been investing and developing in uh, real estate in Pasco since the seventies. And um, and full disclosure, uh, Bob Tippit, who is the managing partner, is my father-in-law. And our company, uh, which I'm the designated broker of, uh, and Bob have provided TLP with management, planning, consulting for this property uh, for a number of years. And uh, way back in two thousand and eleven, uh, the partnership began discussing um, uh, including a hundred and twenty acres into the UGA with the city of Pasco. And the idea originated from two needs. One, the city needed a soccer complex. And two, the partnership wanted to work with its neighbors to create a land use buffer between the industrial development that was coming from the south and um, our residential neighbors to the north. Um, the partnership went so far as to submit a proposal, a detailed proposal to sell the city land and water rights for a soccer complex. And the city went so far as to design a soccer complex, uh, consult a water rights expert and meet with our neighbors to discuss how the complex would be managed. Um, after meeting with the neighbors, the partners applied to have a hundred and twenty acres included in the UGA. Of which thirty acres would be zoned for a soccer complex and the remaining ninety acres zoned C-three upon annexation. Um, we, TLP and us met with the city department, with city department heads as late as October of two thousand and nineteen to discuss the proposal. And we left with no idea that the UGA had been modified to exclude eighty of the one hundred and twenty acres originally approved in Resolution three eight four five as alternative two. So I'm here to ask, uh, tonight, the Planning Commission reconsider staff's proposal to include all one hundred and twenty acres of the TLP property that was originally approved in Resolution three eight four five for the following reasons. Uh, we understand the city is now not focused on a soccer complex in that area. But this should not preclude the partnership from being able to develop a soccer complex as a legacy project that will also provide a practical land use buffer. If, as expected, our neighbors, uh, the Colville tribes, uh, to the south of the TLP property build a casino and hotel on their recently acquired property located um, adjacent to the pro- uh, to TLP's property. We think this would be a compliment uh, to those users. Uh, the most important thing, I think, is that um, Capitol Avenue was extended as part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act during the Obama administration. And it was intended to stimulate the economy. And by excluding all this ground, we can't figure out why, uh, it just doesn't make any sense that the city would not uh, be more keen to utilize these assets sooner rather than later. So, uh, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Laird. Appreciate it. Next, we are going on to
Mr. Figgus.
Mr. Figgus. Name and address. And Mr. Funfar is working, walking in here. Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, can you hear?
We can.
Madam Chairman, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, Madam Chairman, this is Mark Figgus, uh, four oh five East Lincoln Avenue, Yakima, Washington. I'm a real estate and land use attorney in Yakima. I'm here on behalf of Fred Olberding and Big Sky Developers. I actually have two matters to briefly address to the Planning Commission. Um, and so I've requested I'd be allowed six minutes. They're two separate issues. They're the Olberding commercial designation and the Kohler omission from the UGA. Starting, I, addressing your initial question, I did submit a detailed letter on the Olberding commercial designation. It's at pages seventy-four through eighty of the commissioner's packet. And I'd certainly uh, ask that you review that prior to any additional meetings. Long story short, I disagree. While, while I appreciate Jacob Gonzalez's summary, uh, and what happened. I do think there's a significant procedural defect in this process. Uh, and that alternative three has not had adequate public participation and development. I think it violates RCW thirty-six seventy-eight point oh three five. I suggest that the city consult with legal counsel. It doesn't serve a purpose for an attorney to argue with the lay commission members. Um, and, and Rick White certainly should consult with Eric Ferguson. Long story short, this meeting shouldn't have happened till after the EIS comment period has expired. Uh, not to mention the fact that during a COVID crisis with three minutes, uh, it doesn't meet the spirit and intent of the state's Growth Management Act, which is to allow your development community and property owners to comment. I appreciate that the city and county is behind on their GMA mandates. This should have been done a couple of years ago. But you'll wanna do the process right, or it's gonna have to be started over. Again, going to Fred Olberding's, the merits uh, uh, of the letter. Um, it just seems, there is no evidence on this record on why thirty acres of prime residential property next to your future high school would be zoned commercial. Uh, nobody wants it. There's no evidence in the record to support it. You don't have a demand for it. And as the Caleb Strom said, stated, Burns Road isn't a commercial arterial. There's no way you can handle commercial traffic from Burns Road. So the request would be to go back to alternative two, or you as a planning commission have the power to make recommended minor modifications. And we would propose that regarding the Olberding property, that the commercial designation be removed. And that if you go with some form of alternative three, which is not cast in stone, contrary to what Mr. Gonzalez told you, the commercial designation should be removed. It's not supportable on the record. And it, and, and it violates all kinds of goals and policies of the GMA, which is you only have commercial development where it's where it's uh, the infrastructure's needed, uh, like along Road sixty-eight. Switching to the Kohler expansion, this is a hundred and four acres of prime residential property overlooking the Columbia River that was included in alternative one and two. The reason our clients didn't comment is they thought it would be within the UGA. Alternative three now has it located outside the UGA. This property's al- already ready to be developed now by Mr. Greeno and Big Sky Developers. With a simple water extension and sewer extension, he can develop it in a responsible way using city services, which is what the GMA wants. This property, all, all that your UGA is, remember, is where you expect urban level growth to happen in the next twenty years. Um, this property is ready to happen and be developed immediately. The current owner, Deborah Kohler, uh, does not wanna farm it anymore. The property's under contract. And again, with a responsible developer that you're familiar with, with a simple water and sewer extension, you don't need, you can develop it at a more dense urban level without onsite septic systems protecting the Columbia River. And without use of groundwater, also protecting the environment and Columbia River. Uh, I doubt there will be, would be any opposition to adding another hundred acres into the UGA in the far northwest corner of the property. Uh, again, I wish I had more time. I'd be happy to answer questions. And I will reserve the right, uh, and probably will file a supplemental letter before the thirty-day EIS comment period expires again. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Figgus. Next, Mr. White?
Randy, Mr. Randy Hayden.
Mr. Randy Hayden. Name and address, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Randy Hayden. I am with the Port of Pasco at eleven ten Oskar Point Boulevard in Pasco. We, I, I wrote a letter and I, I don't wanna reiterate all that here, but just uh, throw out a couple highlights. I strongly support the city of Pasco's request for adding industrial land to the UGA to promote economic development. Uh, and that refers to option three. Uh, the additional land to be added to the UGA within that three ninety-five corridor, just north of existing development. And all of this land is already in industrial land for the county. The question becomes whether it's better to be developed in the county or the city. We think the city is preferable. It's also close to railroads, highway interchange, and major power and gas. We also believe it's a balanced request. Uh, the city has taken out other industrial lands already in their inventory to add the new lands in. So we think it's a very balanced approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Mr. White?
Uh, uh, previous speaker Caleb Stromstedt.
Do we wanna let everyone go first who hasn't been heard? Okay, so, Mr. Stromstedt.
Oh, go ahead and come back to me at the end, please. I'd, I'd like to hear everybody else speak.
Okay, I believe you are the last person.
Oh, excellent. Um, honestly, okay. So again, we're just gonna reiterate, the uh, the Kohler property. The Big Sky Developers proposing to extend city sewer, uh, one mile of Dent Road. It's gonna open up nine hundred acres um, for immediate development. And again, the Planning Commission, we encourage you to read the letters that were um, already submitted. And Jacob, Jacob, you mentioned that um, you were going to comment and respond to letters. And we would greatly appreciate um, written comments being responded to. We haven't seen that happen in the past. Uh, I'll, I'll just give Mr. Tippit as an example. He submitted a le- a letter in March and there has been no dialogue or discussion or comment in response to that. Um, Big Sky Developers has contracted with Mr. Figgus, Land Use Attorney, who submitted the letter that was in the staff report. He just recently submitted another one for the Kohler property. Um, that I encourage the Planning Commission to read. Again, we would, we would very much appreciate the city to comment on these letters. Because we have been asking for information of how is a commercial land use designation there? Is there any justification for it? And we can only speculate. And so we would greatly appreciate the city responding to all the written comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stromstedt. Mr. White, anyone else?
I don't believe so. There are still several people that have their hand raised. Uh, I'll start from the beginning. Um, Caleb, who just spoke, Charles Laird, his hand's still raised, and that is it. So Mr. Laird is the only. Mr. Stromstedt, it, no, no more hands raised.
No more hands raised. I would like to thank you so much for your comments. And uh, Mr. Gonzalez, did you wanna add something else?
Yes, I, I did. Uh, be, just before moving on to the next item. Again, appreciate the comments received from folks that have taken the time to participate um, in this unique situation here. Um, just take a, a few more notes, uh, from some of the recent comments. Um, residential development uh, along the shoreline would Residential development, uh, along the shoreline would would likely have to comply with the shoreline management plan, uh, required and the shoreline management act. Um, so while it may be available for development, that doesn't necessarily mean it is in the best interest of the City of Pasco. To develop, uh, along the shoreline. Um, commercial designation surrounded by residential, I think in itself, um. In twenty seventeen, maybe even twenty sixteen, the City of Pasco, uh, in partnership with the Washington State Department of Transportation, actually worked on a. Interstate justification report, uh, looking at future land uses, uh, a lot of them which ended up in Alternative Number Two. And, uh, that report ended up being held up because of the lack of commercial land use allocated in the City of Pasco. Predominantly north of the interstate. What we see, uh, which we count, uh, based on basic travel patterns, is that the majority of residences that live north of the interstate. End up having to travel through Road sixty-eight, through Road a hundred, onto the interstate and work elsewhere. And while we can't control where anybody works. We have limited, extremely limited employment opportunities in the cities, uh, City of Pasco. I think we've done well on the industrial. Um, however, regarding the industrial allocation itself, the City of Canoway actually commissioned a regional industrial analysis, which determined that we had. Overcapacity of industrial room in the region. The City of Pasco took a little bit more of an in-depth approach. That's why we're able to, um, take away some places, uh, including the port. They requested a larger area along with the Tippett Company east of Capitol Avenue. And I think there was a question earlier about what would be defined as inappropriate. That land east of three ninety-five. Is currently zoned AP twenty. That's agricultural. That would be an inappropriate conversion of land into urban land uses. Um, there's probably a few more that, um, uh, we'll have to come back and re-watch the meeting, obviously. But I do intend to reach out to everybody who commented it. Again, appreciate it. And, um, look forward to moving forward with this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister White.
And, uh, Madam Chair, I want to make sure that, uh, Miss, Miss Cable does not want to offer comment. I don't see the the hand raised on the screen, but I just want to make sure that she can give it another try if she so wishes. I also want to make sure that the Commission notes that, um. On Ju- at the June eighteenth Planning Commission hearing, this topic will also be on the agenda.
I don't get to strike my gavel today.
Uh, it looks like Commissioner Campos has a question.
Commissioner Campos.
I just wanted to just reiterate, I want to appreciate everybody for, um, coming on and and making their points across. We really do appreciate it. And it is really the heart of the Commission to listen to everybody. Um, that is best for our community. We live here as well, and, uh, we want to make sure that we make that right decision, uh, for everybody. And it is, uh, my understanding that we are, um, going to, um. I guess I should just say this out, to to basically for staff to listen to the public comments and then, and then continue this.
And that was from Commissioner A. Campos, not to be confused with Commissioner J. Compost, no relation. And we have one more comment. Who is that, Mister White?
Stromstedt.
Mister Stromstedt.
Now, it's George Docstetter talking from his computer. Uh. The biggest concern most of us have is nobody in the real estate industry. None of the home builders associations, none of the developers or landowners. Have been able to put any public comment in since eighteen. All this has been done by staff, even though we've called down there and asked to have input. We were told we weren't gonna take any input from us. It was all gonna be done at this meeting when we got to speak. And as far as the AP twenty acre minimum Mister Gonzalez is talking about. That's the whole darn property out there being included in the urban growth area is all twenty acre limit. So, I mean, that, you can't say that we're not gonna do that one over there because of the twenty acre limitation. When everything north of our line road is a twenty acre limitation in the county right now. Except for the long sliver along the river. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mister White.
Again, Madam Chair, I want to iterate that we are in a public process right now. So Mister Docstetter's comments, um, certainly can be, uh, perceived as not having public comment. That's what we're doing right now. That's what the draft EIS statement process is for, public comment. So, yes, there is an alternative no action. There's a larger forty-eight hundred, uh, acre expansion. And then the Alternative Three, which is the subject of many of the speakers', uh, sentiments this evening. We're in a public comment period now. I want to reiterate, you should provide some version of your spoken comments tonight. In writing, so that they're on the record for, uh, the, uh, future consideration by the Planning Commission and then an eventual decision. Not only by City Council, but by the Franklin County Planning Commission and the Franklin County Commissioners. Um, the Commissioners have the final say in the urban growth area boundaries. The city does not.
Thank you for that clarification, Mister White. So I am looking at the staff recommendation. And it is that the Commission accept these public comments on the urban growth area and the draft EIS. And continue the public hearing to the June eighteenth Planning Commission meeting. So I don't need to take a vote, correct? No vote necessary.
May I, may I comment just quickly, uh, Madam Chair?
Oh, Commissioner Myram. I didn't get you in before, apologies. Please.
No, thank, I wanted to reiterate, um, my. And to break comment. And just quickly to staff, I mean, is it, is it customary that in this process? There, there can be tailor ma- tailor and custom, uh, modifications made to the plan based on, uh, property owners' requests? Or, or is the process more of a, uh, you know, based on capacity, road capacity? And it looks like the maps right now are based more on capacity and less on visual property owners. So that's one question and second.
Mister Gonzalez. Okay, it sounded like Commissioner Myron, your connection isn't good for the last thing that you just said. You got cut off.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not hearing you. Uh, would it help Mister White if he wrote something in chat?
That, that may help, um, and in, in response to Mister Myron's first question, the, um. Uh, of course, it depends, the scale of the requests or comments or questions, uh, would dictate how much. Um. Reworking the transportation analysis, the capital facility analysis. And anything else connected with the change would dictate. So if, if we're talking about a hundred acres here, a hundred acres there, uh, it it's going to entail some more additional work. If we're talking about one or two acres or perhaps a different configuration for four or five acres of commercial. That may not, but it, it depends on the scale of the request. And I, I hope you heard that, uh, Mister Myram, um, but the, the second part of your, the, the second phase of your question didn't. Wasn't heard here at all.
Alright, I, I blame my cellphone provider, but, uh, it was, it was in regards to, uh, whether or not the Broadmoor Master Plan is fully fleshed out. In Alternative Two. Looks like in Alternative Three it is, but I, I don't see as much detail on, in the Broadmoor area. Which would allow for maybe higher density development, um, in there. But I, it was just a question about Alternative Two. Thanks.
Mister Gonzalez.
Uh, with regards to the Broadmoor area, we, we did incorporate, uh, the majority of the forecasted housing growth, uh, target. Uh, in Broadmoor within the twenty-year timeframe. Obviously, Broadmoor is not going to develop fully within the next eighteen to nineteen years. Um, but we try to incorporate as much of it as reasonably possible to, to, uh, take advantage of that growth.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez. And with that. We are going to move on to our next item. Which is a public hearing regarding a code amendment, the Waterfront Development District. MFCA twenty nineteen zero zero one. And with that, I will ask Mister Gonzalez once again to speak.
Uh, good evening again, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, this again is a continued public hearing on the proposed creation of the Waterfront Development District. District. The applicant is the Port of Pasco. Uh, this item has been discussed with the Planning Commission at a workshop in September of twenty nineteen and public hearings in February and March of this year. Um, staff has had productive discussions with the Port of Pasco regarding the code, its development standards and the compliance with the existing comprehensive plan goals. Policies, including the shoreline master plan and program. Um, the staff report remains relatively the same. However, there should be noted, there is one update regarding the permitted use of private streets. Um, as identified in the attached letter to the staff report from AHBL, staff agrees with the concept. And the applicability within the Waterfront Development District here. Um, I believe we have Nicole Stickney with AHBL on behalf of the Port of Pasco. Believe she's on the phone, uh, with a presentation to share with the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. Yes, again, my name is Nicole Stickney and I'm presenting on behalf of the Port of Pasco. I do work for AHBL and we're located on, uh, Route ninety there in Pasco. Um, if we can move up to the first slide, I'm, I'm just gonna go over a couple quick slides, just to give a recap. This is something that, as Jacob mentioned, you heard at a previous meeting, uh, but we just wanted to kind of give a little quick reminder, since it's been some time. So again, we are proposing the creation of a new zoning district in the City of Pasco. This will be known as the Waterfront Development District. So it'll be a new chapter in your zoning code title seventeen, I believe, or twenty-five, I believe. And the intent here is to implement a mixed-use land use designation. Uh, which will be forthcoming once the city updates their comprehensive plan. So for a while now, the city has, uh, been interested in seeing a portion of the waterfront there at Osprey Point. Um, being changed to a mixed-use designation on their land use map and that will, this, uh, proposal will help to implement that. And, uh, I wanted to emphasize that there are important similarities, but also some dissimilarities with your existing zoning districts. Um, of, in terms of development standards and also uses. And, um, it, and it goes into the, what the intent is for the property overall. And so we've worked, uh, carefully to make sure that this, uh, zoning district will fit in with the, uh, the way that the code is currently organized. And it, uh, will, will have distinct differences, but also, uh, work within the existing scheme that you now have. Okay, and the next slide shows basically the area where we want to have this applied. Um, it'll be on the Port of Pasco's Osprey Point property, which of course is along the waterfront there. It's a, it's a key, uh, property. It's partially developed, um, but there are some plans for, um, bringing in a private developer and a partnership. And, uh, different things that may come about in the years to come. And so looking forward, the port realizes that it's important to shift at this point. Um, from the existing, uh, assigned zoning to something, uh, more appropriate for the vision of the site. And the next slide. This talks a little bit about why we want to see mixed use there. Um, in addition to supporting mixed, mixed, uh, or job growth, excuse me. Uh, going mixed use makes a lot of sense for this location, because this will help to create a vibrant waterfront destination. And we talked about that a lot at your, uh, March meeting, about how that's really based on a lot of things that, um, has been revealed. By the community in terms of what they're wanting to see, um, in Pasco. Uh, we highlight that this will provide opportunities for different housing types. And, um, one reason why the port wants to pursue this is the acknowledgement that industrial development has been changing. And, uh, they wanna do things a little bit differently in that, uh, particular site. Finally, they want to really foster a compatible mix of all these different uses. And the next slide just ha- highlights all of these big ideas that we're trying to bring about. And I'm struggling to read it, so give me just a moment here. I'm gonna pull up my own slide so I can know what it says there. Um, first of all, the vision, uh, for this area is a walkable and active, uh, site. Uh, we want to have high density there and it's going to be focused on quality design. Uh, the uses are gonna transition across the site and be, um, very people-friendly. And what I mean by that is we're going to have, uh, really vibrant, uh, downtown, or excuse me, waterfront area. That's gonna meet the needs of various types of residents, so there will be people living, recreating and enjoying down there. Um, and working in that area. So it's all gonna be a mix of space, um, and different uses. We do want to promote a mix of housing options in that area. Um, the private roads is an important element here. The purpose of it is to really engage the public, encourage parking and walking. Um, within that district, um, and also maximizing the capability to close for events. While we know that it's, um, it's not something that's too hard to do in the City of Pasco, we really want to make sure that private roads down there. Um, can be really managed, uh, by the area down there, um, the different uses and so forth. And as I mentioned before, we want to integrate public and private uses. We're gonna avoid it parking oversupply. As I mentioned before, there's some dissimilarities with the other codes. And for this particular code, we have, um, limits on the parking, um, spaces that can be developed for each different sta- uh, type. As well as the minimum parking requirements. And we want to maximize the area for buildings and public spaces. And finally, I just have a few slides that we can just flip through, just maybe a couple seconds for each one. I would appreciate that. Um, just to remind you of some examples that we showed previously, um, one being Kendall Yards in Spokane. We also looked down in Oregon. And the next slide, the Orenco Station, um, in Hillsborough, which is, uh, really sort of a vibrant, um. Like it's a transit-oriented development in this case, but this gives sort of an example of what the, uh, this, uh, built environment could look like. And how it could be, um, really a wonderful place for people to congregate. And then finally, another example is of course, um, down at Columbia Point, uh, Richland's Waterfront. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, re-present this and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions. And thank you also for allowing us the opportunity to submit more information about the plan for private streets. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Miss Stickney. I'm going to ask staff, are there any other comments?
Uh, none from staff.
Terrific. I will now open this up. Uh, we've had the applicant speak. Um, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? For the applicant, who in this place is the city? I'm looking to Mister White.
Mister Campos may have a question. I see his, uh, light on.
Which Mister Campos? That's the question. Mister A. Campos. Did you wanna ask a question, make a comment? Oh, an accidental. Alright. We all know about those. Okay. Commissioners, alright, we have now come to the. Part of our time reserved for the public hearing. And, uh, if there are any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item now. Is the time to come forward and speak. Once again, I'm gonna ask you to state your name and address for the, for the record. Mister White, you will let me know if anyone has raised their hand.
None so far.
None so far. Well, I know we did have a mix-up from one member of the public. Before the meeting started, didn't we? Who I thought was saying that, uh, he was opposing that tattoo parlors. No? Okay, I misheard. That wouldn't be the first time. Well, this is, uh, I'm speechless, 'cause I had hoped that we were going to have a vibrant discussion. Mister Gonzalez, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd, I'd add that, uh, obviously appreciate the, the, uh, effort behind, uh, the Port of Pasco. And Nicole sitting at AHBL on, on bringing this to the, uh, Planning Commission. I'd also offer that a lot. I'd also offer that a lot of the public, the public comment that went into the creation of the code that we see in front of this was the result of the. Extensive efforts conducted uh, by the Port of Pasco, the city of Pasco, Franklin County. During the Somos Pasco effort. Uh, this off also was. Um, I believe a result of the twenty-ten boat basin study just adjacent to this property. So this this process itself is the result. Of uh, quite an extensive public comment process and this is the implementation of that effort. So again, appreciate the efforts uh, by the port.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez.
And and Mister Blue did raise his hand.
Oh, Mister Blue. Wow. Okay.
Yes, I just, I I you you seem to really want a comment. This is Gary Blue. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the Port of Pasco. Um, I I just. We're just gonna have Nicole speak uh, tonight. I do support planning commission. I support staff. Um, this has been a long uh, process. And I figured planning commission had really heard enough from me. So uh, with that, I'm gonna keep my comments short, but I did at least wanna get on the record that the Port of Pasco supports the uh, addition of the zoning code.
Thank you very much. And I don't think we needed his address. No, we didn't need um, Mister Blue's address. Alright. Uh, with that, I am calling three times for public comment. Calling again. Calling again. Okay, commissioners, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Jerry Cochran. I moved to close the public hearing on the proposed code amendment for the creation of a waterfront district and set June eighteenth, twenty twenty. As the date for deliberations and recommendation for city council.
Seconding A Campos.
Let the record show, it was moved by Commissioner Cochran, seconded by Commissioner A Campos. And. We didn't vote on it, though. Don't we have to vote? Yeah, well, I forgot to vote. Okay. Let me step back from that for a second. All those in favor. Say aye.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Okay, now, I will let the record show. That it was moved by Commissioner Cochran and seconded by Commissioner A Campos. And the motion passed unanimously. Alright, we are now. Moving forward to the workshop. And with that, I am going to uh, turn it over to Mister Gonzalez to talk about street connectivity.
Uh, good evening again, members of the planning commission. Uh, this will be the last item on tonight's agenda, so appreciate your patience with us tonight. And with the others, this was an item that was continued um, from prior meetings. This was shared at workshops in December and March. Um, at the prior meetings, uh, you remember, you may remember that the primary discussions uh, focus on the need for this code amendment. Uh, to meet already existing and established goals of the city council, the comprehensive plan. Numerous federal, state and regional guidance on transportation specifically on providing multimodal connectivity opportunities for members of the public. Um, the slide on the screen you see in front of you uh, briefly mentions what some of these are. You can see goals. Uh, dating far back as a two thousand eight comprehensive plan, the twenty-eleven bike pad master plan. The twenty-eighteen complete streets policy enacted by the city council. Along with the in-progress twenty-thirty-eight comprehensive plan and the transportation system plan. Um, the codes specifically that will be addressed primarily are what you see on the screen. That would be in PMC's twenty-one, I'm sorry. Pasco Municipal Code Title twenty-one, fifteen and twenty, which regulates streets and lots and blocks. So the objective of this code today um, is to take a look at. Um, what we can do in our municipal code to ensure that the transportation patterns that. I'm sorry, the transportation network in our city is developed in a compatible manner that makes sense as we continue to grow rapidly. Um, eh, as you can, as it was mentioned earlier, the comprehensive plan obviously is in progress, but the transportation system master plan, which was a council goal. Um, and this is a great, um, this is actually a great uh, slide to have up on the screen right now for this portion. The transportation system master plan, which just began, starts with the base evaluation of what we have currently in the system and right away. A constraint um, was identified, which was the circulation patterns that do not exist for residents of the city of Pasco, specifically north of the interstate. Um, these constraints to circulation significantly decrease access and the city's ability to provide convenient and safe service for residents. Additionally, the abnormally long blocks were mentioned. And we will see on the side here, the code amendment will primarily, as as I mentioned, address the lots and blocks. And if you go to the next slide. You can see what a drastic difference we have here, um, here in the city of Pasco. This obviously is not too far from where we sit here today at City Hall. And although this isn't a perfect grid pattern, even with large public facilities such as Edgar Brown Stadium, one of the largest high schools nearby at Pasco High. Regional uh, Memorial Park, libraries. Um, even without a perfect grid pattern, you have much more accessible opportunities compared to what you saw on the prior screen, which also has libraries. Schools and parks, all publicly paid for, but made much more difficult to access. So with the assistance of our consultant taken into account. Uh, obviously, the long-established goals, we've taken a look at providing alternative scenarios, I'm sorry, alternative scenarios for what. Uh, we can do in the code to uh, reinforce the importance. Of the transportation system here in the city of Pasco. Um, the code considerations, obviously, are gonna take a look at block length, block perimeter, the cul-de-sacs, mid-block connections. Um, and identify the benefits and impacts. That'll likely come out of the transportation system master plan, which is intended for an early uh, twenty-twenty-one adoption. But obviously, we've already identified the constraints, so it allows us to move forward here. So this screen here shows um, the different uh, scenarios that we've provided or we've uh, developed. Um, for what um, we believe would best address the needs um, long identified. So. On the left column is a scenario and then the following columns are for block length, block perimeter, the cul-de-sac. And the connection to adjacent properties. And although the differences in the actual distances. Uh, identified here may seem minimal, they do make a significant impact. Um, each one of these has benefits and positives of of what is identified here. The only numerical requirement currently identified by the city of Pasco is that blocks shall not be longer than thirteen hundred and twenty feet. Thirteen twenty feet is has obviously been addressed as is too long for residents to um, have to access the nearby block. Um, so when we go to the uh, next screens here, you can see. Uh, now, these obviously aren't drawn to scale, but you can see what a block length and block perimeter requirement. Uh, what that does to the delineation of blocks as they develop here in the city of Pasco. So this one obviously is the most, uh, I don't wanna say restrictive, but definitely the offers the most compact grid pattern. And uh, offers the most benefit. This is what you find in traditional cities. It's what you find not too far from here. Um, obviously, the most benefit for multimodal travel opportunities in the next screen. You increase the block um, perimeter slightly, so you allow a little bit more block to develop. So your blocks are longer, your blocks are wider. Uh, and you can see that pattern exists through the next two. Same with alternative number three, you've got a block perimeter of of eighteen hundred and eighty feet. Block length is seven hundred and twenty feet. And then when you go to the last scenario. On the next slide, you can see that jumps up to an eight hundred foot block length with a two thousand foot block perimeter. Again, while they seem minimal, the the longer your block length gets, the larger your block perimeter is, the less of a benefit you actually get. So even if. The planning commission uh, was in favor of the uh, the uh, larger block pattern here. Although we'd get the benefit of having an established uh, standard for us to follow. You you will lose the benefits of having the compact pattern to begin with. And as we've spoken about, not only today, but prior. At prior planning commission and city council meetings. Um, and as identified just recently in the Port of Pasco's um, presentation. Um, the community is asking for a different pattern. That's been identified through this Somos Pasco effort, uh, that was an extensive public comment process. Uh, the surveys that are conducted every two years by the city of Pasco uh, identified that the built environment and pedestrian safety. As high concerns. And so what we are proposing here is just an implementation of what's long been identified by the public and city council. So we're not expecting uh, obviously, a vote today. This is just a workshop, but this talks about. This this gets to the level of detail that we intend to move forward with. With this code amendment, uh, to allow us to begin to meet not only the demands that exist today. Um, but also when we talk about forty-eight thousand additional people here in the city of Pasco, including jobs and industrial growth. Without a proper transportation system, you can expect are already at capacity of roadways to just become more congested. Failing levels of services. And at the end of that, you'd end up having to deter development when your transportation system can no longer meet the basic needs of the community. So we believe that this is the best way and the best methodology to meet uh. Meet the needs of the the folks here in the city of Pasco. So so looking for some feedback, general discussion, we do plan to bring this back again in June. Um, and as necessary, uh, hopefully for a public hearing at that time. But again, this item here uh, would appreciate any comments. And general guidance from the planning commission on on where they see um, the city Pasco uh, that's being served by the possible scenarios identified here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez. I am now looking at Mister White to see if any of my fellow commissioners would like to speak up. While we are waiting to see if any raise their hands. Um, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions and make a comment. Um, it was really helpful to see the block perimeter and block length. Um. Tables or charts that we had here. Um, it seemed like in the tri-cities, they are a lot larger than they are elsewhere. Um, the other thing I was gonna ask, on page six, you have table three. So. I heard you say a moment ago that thirteen hundred twenty. Feet is the current average?
No, thirteen hundred and twenty feet is the maximum block length uh, currently permitted in the Pasco Municipal Code. And 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 even then, I'll I'll add that it doesn't define uh, whether that is, it just says block length and um. There's some language within the code that would require mid-block pedestrian crossings, however, as identified in the staff report today and at March. The um, and as noted by our consultant with the transportation system master plan. The lack of clarity does create uh, some challenges. Uh, during the regular review process of of developments as they occur in the city of Pasco. We believe that by providing a standard to begin with. Um, not only does that uh, make um, the development community have a predictable pattern in which they know. Um, their their uh, properties would have to comply by, but also ensures that they meet the goals and policies established here by the city.
So in that table, the block length, all of the block lengths are shorter than the thirteen hundred twenty.
Yes.
Maximum.
Yes.
Okay, do you want our feedback as to whether we prefer scenario one, two, three or four?
That would be appreciated. Um, I, you know, or just a general guidance on on how you feel about that. Obviously, um. Uh, as we mentioned earlier, the the larger you make your block, you lose the intended benefits. It still provides some clarity, but you will lose the benefits. I think as we expect to grow and adjust the development patterns and react to what the community has been telling us. I think it's important for us to keep in mind that these shorter blocks do offer the best opportunity for walkable communities.
I was just having trouble translating. The that table into the. What is it, four slides of street connectivity? Oh, okay. I see. It just, it appears that the longer the block length, the more lots. You can get in there. Okay, and explain to me the distinction between each page, yeah, uh, of the three options on each slide. So it's high density, medium density, large lot.
Yeah, it it gives an example. Uh, the city already has minimum lot sizes, so we try to take uh, relative. Of lot averages, right? So in your high density, relative forty-hundred square feet, that's. Um, again, not drawn to scale, but that's what you might expect when you up the lot size of seventy-two hundred square feet. Obviously, you get less lots, but you have larger lots. And the same applies when you uh, jump up to large lots over twelve thousand square feet.
So one of the things that might help me better understand this would be to put this. On some existing streets in Pasco, so I would have something to compare it to. So that's my, that's my comment. Mister White, did we have anyone else raise hands?
Hey, this is Jerry Cochran. I I'm somehow in staff, so I can't raise my hand. So I just have to talk. I ended up in the staff bucket somehow, so I think Isaac and Anna were all in the staff bucket, so I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay, well, go ahead and talk.
Yeah, so the question I had is um, do we have, I mean, maybe it's one, another thing that would be helpful for me. I like the questions uh, you had already, Tony. The another thing that might be helpful is, do we have like a comparison of other uh, similar metropolitan areas or, you know. Particularly surrounding in eastern Washington, like is this, is this also a problem in Kennewick and uh, Richland? Um, is, you know, be, I think that would be one thing that would be helpful to understand what are. You know, what are their block kind of parameters, like we've done in some of these other measurement things. And then the other question I had, is there been any to so far, I mean, I don't know how much you've exposed this to the developer community, but is. Are there any general themes of the developer community on these changes? Um, what do you believe or have you heard any concerns from them today?
Uh, yes, on the staff report, actually, figure one. And figure two have examples of block perimeter comparisons across, I believe seventeen jurisdictions in the state of Washington and. I think it's kind of easy to see there, you've got the tri-cities with Pasco on the very left side. Um, have some of their higher block perimeters um, across the state. Now, keep in mind that also, um, that's the whole entire city. When you look at specific neighborhoods in the city. Uh, we conducted a analysis through the UGA process where we looked at right-of-way, so street. Requirements in different neighborhoods and the right-of-way in uh, central Pasco, the neighborhoods surrounding City Hall right now. Is upwards of twenty-eight to thirty-three percent of any neighborhood development. And when you get north of the interstate, we've. We identified that the right-of-way decreases significantly to twenty-two percent or less. Um, so while that may seem like a good thing, the the reality is that we end up getting a transportation system that. Uh, doesn't, i- is is not as efficient as it needs to be. We get less transportation and it serves less. Whereas in the traditional neighborhoods across all three cities here, you get more efficiency out of your grid pattern. Um, there's always a discussion about downtown Pasco, about the structure, about the the bones of downtown Pasco. And primarily, not only is that focused on the built environment. But it's on the fact that the grid pattern is well-established. It offers a better opportunity for redevelopment, street frontage and um. The frontage of businesses to have, uh, you have more corners, you have more corner lots. There's a benefit on the commercial side of that as well. Obviously, this will be a change for the residential development community. However, this is a response to. Um, I think actually on the last slide of the PowerPoint, you'll see documents or photo scans from nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, and upwards of of today, of the transportation and system master plan that. Have listed the lack of connectivity as a problem for the city of Pasco. In fact. A local real estate agency, I believe Century Twenty-One, put together a walkability, it's walk score, which is available across the country to anybody. It's public data. Uh, but noted that the tri-city, specifically Pasco, has one of the lower walk score. Uh, scores across um, across the state based on the transportation system. So. Um, obviously, this will be a change and staff will have to work closely with developers as they uh. Propose their projects and we will do our best to work diligently with them. However. Um, this has been long established as a need for the city of Pasco. This is just the implementation of those efforts.
Thank you, that helps. Um, yeah, and I, you know, again, another, maybe it's a dumb question. This will be applied to new projects and new. This will be applied to new projects and new construction as we go forward. Um, uh, is is that how it's generally applied, or is there a attempt to try to somehow retrofit this to problem areas? Cause seems like you're not gonna fix some of the bad stuff up north of the interstate.
Yeah, you're absolutely. Yeah, sorry about that, yeah, absolutely, you're you're correct, we're not gonna retrofit what was built over the last thirty years. Um, so, in reality, this will mainly be a benefit to what occurs uh in the remaining city. Uh, and also uh urban growth area north of uh of Burns Road.
And, just to pick up on the last question that Commissioner Cochran had asked. About input from the development community. Um, I was gonna ask, after this is when we have the public hearing, correct?
Yes, we would like to bring this back for a public hearing in June, um and to hear from the public and anyone else interested in this topic. Um, definitely would appreciate further comments on that one, on this item, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez, Mister White.
Commissioner Mendez.
Please, Mister Commissioner Mendez.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, I just had a comment and a question, uh, my comment is um. I like the proposal to decrease the block lengths and the block perimeters, I think it will give us more livable, walkable neighborhoods. Uh, I think that would be a good for the city. Uh, my question is, uh, what is the impact to the annual transportation cost per household? Is there a correlation, will it decrease it?
E- that's, it's actually, there's a figure uh three in the staff report is the annual transportation cost per household. And I think it'd be um, I think it might be overstepping to say that there's a direct correlation between block size and household costs. With regards to transportation, because uh job distance and land use is a significant component. Of how far you need to get your car to drive, if your only option is to drive. Um, I think it's important for us to keep in mind that while these are separate items today. The land uses attributed to the urban growth area. Prior efforts by staff and the planning commission to uh make parts of the zoning code more flexible. Are all aimed at creating a more cohesive environment, so these aren't isolated topics. They are as items, but as concepts and how they in uh impact the community uh after being impli- implemented. They are all interrelated, so the next step is not just having a transportation grid that offers or fosters a more walkable uh environment. The next step is to encourage mixes of uses such as commercial, residential, public facilities next to each other and adjacent. So that you're not, your only option isn't necessarily to get in your car and drive twelve minutes to the grocery store. If you like to walk, you can, you don't have to, if you'd like to take your bike, this system offers a better opportunity and it's safer. Uh, for that to take place, but I think it'd be um, it probably would be jumping it to say that there's a direct correlation. But I do think it's important for us to take a look and compare the transportation cost per household and look at the block length and perimeter. Of the seventeen communities of Washington and see if there is any relationship that could be determined.
Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners who would like to speak?
Commissioner Jordan here.
Please, Commissioner Jordan.
I would like, thank you, um, I would like to also agree with uh Chairman Bowers that. It would be nice to see a visualization on their lot sizes, um, on the street connectivity. Where we're actually able to look at kind of a visual of what the city looks like with the different patterns. Uh, that makes it really easy to see the benefit of the the grid pattern, um, but on the sizing, it's just not, it's hard to visualize. How that's going to impact what it's going to look like going forward, so if there's a way that we could get a visual on those numbers, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan.
Mister Campos.
A or J?
Able.
Okay, Commissioner A Campos.
Uh, Ja- Jacob, first of all, thank you for the information, you had said that the survey had indicated that. Um, residents did want to see a a different in patterns, we're talking about the grid pattern. Um, or are we talking about um still using the others? And if so, um, is there, based off of the different scenarios that we have, one through four, is there one that is better for the grid or vice versa?
I I think I understood, it was two questions, one was this, the results of the surveys and the second was the. Uh, impact on the grid pattern. Um, in reality, any of these scenarios uh would be much better than what we have today because there's a pattern to follow. The next, I think, uh, I I think the next component to consider is. How much more of a benefit do we get with a more compact development pattern? Um, we know that transit works better in compact developments. Uh, we know that we have a very young and elderly population served by the Pasco Solid District's bus facilities. And Ben Franklin Transit, Dial-A-Ride. Dial-A-Ride obviously doesn't work best when they're entering neighborhoods that are uh. Isolated from the house next to them or the youth next to them. Uh, so I I think it's an opportunity for us to set a standard and then identify which one works best for what we believe. Um, is the uh the the intended growth for the city of Pasco. Uh, with regards to the survey, um, you can't have a walkable community uh with sprawling neighborhoods. So, uh, we numerous state, local, regional partnerships, Smart Growth America, AARP. National Association of Home Builders, they've all identified that um walkable communities has been increasing. And what they've seen and folks wanting to have, um, you can't have a walkable community in a subdivision full of cul-de-sacs.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Campos and Mister Gonzalez.
Uh, no further comment, appreciate any further discussion, uh until then, we'll bring this back uh at the June eighteenth, planning commission meeting.
Wow, with that, there is, we're on to other business, is there any other business? Commissioner, I'm not Commissioner, Mister White.
Not this evening.
Before we go to adjourn, I am wondering if there are any other comments or questions? From my commissioners, my fellow commissioners.
Um, Madam Chair, oh, I guess not, I thought I saw a hand raised, but not, not so.
This has been.
I did see a hand raised, Mister Stromstedt?
Mister Stromstedt?
This is actually Stephen Bowman. Um, I'm not sure if this is a- appropriate, may I respond to a few of the things that were shared by Mister Gonzalez?
Are we open for public comment? This is not technically the time for public comment, this is just a, this is just a workshop. But uh, how about you take a couple minutes, Mister Bowman?
Uh, I will be, I will be very, very swift. Um, a question that I would have is, what is the average block length in Pasco? I didn't see that on any of the graphs, I seen the maximum block length. Next thing that Mister Gonzalez stated that several times that the public was, is asking. Tried to write out the quote as best as I could, Mister Gonzalez stated several times that the public is asking for smaller block sizes. Can he explain what the outreach or how he has seen this communication from the public? As a developer, I haven't heard it, I haven't been reached out to, and and uh as you've seen earlier, I'm with quite a group of developers and landowners. And uh engineers tonight, and we're all looking at each other perplexed. Mister Al Gonzalez also stated that the staff would work closely with developers, however, the staff would decide if it was acceptable. That's a, that's very unique to me, it uh would appear to me that commissioners and the city council is who makes that decision. Also, it seems to me that this process is not currently done properly. Um, as this isn't uh necessarily a standard uh commute or public discussion time. Um, it it appears that the staff has decided what this, what's going to happen. Before the public gets a uh opportunity to comment. Um, in other words, the commission gets, you know, pick choice one, two or three before the public gets an opportunity to comment. And I think that that is, um, that's not acceptable for it to be that process. So, that's what I had to say, and uh I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you, Mister Bowman, um, that was a question, uh, I thought thirteen thousand twenty was the average block length. In Pasco, I will turn it over to Mister Gonzalez.
No, the one thousand three hundred and twenty foot is the existing requirement, maximum length uh in the Pasco Municipal Code. Um, I do believe a staff report, um, if not in March, then in. Ch- uh, I'm sorry, December, uh, had an average of the block lengths in Pasco. But that information's available and I'll be sure to have that at the June public hearing. Uh, I don't believe we will have a recommendation, a formal recommendation at the June public hearing. So obviously, uh, comment will be accepted there. Um, if there's uh uh any concerns about this, I'd I'd also reiterate. That this is the implementation of long-established council goals, studies by the Washington State Department of Transportation. The Benton Franklin Council of Governments, the Benton Franklin uh Health District. Um, is also was a result of the Summals Pasco Effort. The study, um, I'm sorry, the survey taken every two years by the city of Pasco. And the currently existing study for the Transportation System Master Plan, which I encourage all members of the public and interest parties to participate in. So, by no means is this done as an isolated effort, again, similar to other code amendments. This is the implementation, and it's gonna be a difficult one, and we understand that. But this is the implementation of what council goals have been uh for much longer than I've been here, so.
Thank you very much. What, and um, I know I recently filled out a survey that was online, do you wanna talk about that, Mister Gonzalez?
Yeah, absolutely, for anybody listening, uh, please visit the city Pasco's website. Um, and you should see a link on the front page for the Transportation System Master Plan, there is a survey. It's meant to be as detailed or not as you'd like it to be as participant, of course, we encourage the more information, the better. This will be uh an important component, uh, how we move forward for developing the transportation system and planning. Uh, for the next twenty years or so here in the city of Pasco, so please take the survey, it's available in both English and Spanish. Forward it to your neighbors, your friends, your coworkers, your colleagues, definitely would appreciate that.
And Mister Funfar, are you putting it online? So, so you can see it, if you wanna look at your screen, you can link to it yourself. All right, well, uh, with that, I just wanna thank everyone for your patience. And your participation in today's meeting, this is how we make planning happen in the city of Pasco. And uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting from one of my fellow commissioners.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn and close tonight's meeting.
And I second.
Okay, that was uh moved and seconded, uh, it was moved by Commissioner Cochran. It was seconded by, was that Commissioner Rancier? No, that was Jordan.
Jordan.
Jordan, my bad. Uh, and being moved in second, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh seven P M. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.